We'll call the Monday, June 10th, 2019, regular meeting of Peters Township Council to order. Mr. Lauer, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Merrill.
Present.
Mr. Steigel.
Present.
Mr. Arcuri.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Berquist will not be here tonight. Mr. Ball.
Present.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Peters Township Firefighters, attention. We hand salute.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready, two. Not used to such a packed house here for these meetings, and obviously, tonight it's for a-
Well, I'm actually concerned the fire marshal might declare us to have too many people in here.
Tonight's the one night we don't have to worry about the fire suppression system working. So, obviously, tonight is a bittersweet night for us as we bid adieu to Chief Dan Coyle and welcome our new Fire Chief, Mike McLaughlin. That being said, I've been asked to say a few words about Chief Coyle's tenure, and if I wanted to do Chief Coyle justice, we'd be here for the next two hours, so I'm not going to attempt to do that. I did some research and found out that Chief Coyle is only the seventh Fire Chief in the history of the Peters Township Fire Department, which is amazing to me because he's essentially been Fire Chief my entire life. I certainly don't recall who the Fire Chief was before Dan Coyle, and if any of you know, maybe you can tell me, because he's been Chief since 1982. So, Chief Coyle joined the Fire Department in 1977 at the tender age of 19. At least one of us wasn't born yet at that time. Shows you how long he's been there. He became Chief in 1982, and he stayed Chief until today, so he's been Chief for 37 years. During that time, he has overseen the expansion of the Fire Hall several times, including the latest creation of the new offices and administration area on the second floor. He's also overseen the transition of the Fire Department from a private entity stocked with volunteers to an entity controlled by the township and consisting of both paid firefighters and volunteers. Throughout all those changes, one thing has remained consistent: The Chief has always been steadfast in his dedication to his men and his women, to this township, and he's always represented this township with dignity and with honor. And like I said, Chief, we cannot put into words what the contributions you've made to this township are going to far outlive any of us, and it is my honor to present you with this badge commemorating your retirement, and we thank you for your service.
I'm not used to pinning another guy, so this is-
The nodalists. I don't know what you're going to do with yourself.
Oh, believe me, sir. All stay busy.
See you at the staff meeting on the 24th.
I'd like to just say a quick few words. Paul's limited me to a few hundred words or less. I was, um, I'm honored and privileged to serve the residents of Peters Township and Peters Township Council administration staff. I grew up one of eight kids, and I was always learned to make do with what I had, and I believe that we've done that. Always wanted to return something back that I had in better shape than when I got. I believe I've done that. There's been many people in this room, people council for years gone by, management years gone by, that have helped me transition the department to where we're at today. It's been a long journey, but it's been a huge responsibility, and within that, you're constantly looking for someone that can be the next guy to stand up, and I believe that we have that person in Mike McLaughlin. Known Mike since he's been a little boy, grew up with my daughter, and I'm proud to say that Mike is the new Fire Chief of Peters Township. I'm sure he'll do a fine job. And the same with Dave Caputo. Dave came to us, and Dave comes from a, you know, great family, and he's a dedicated individual, and he's loyal. And that's a big word in the fire service is loyalty. You know, we look to the residents of the township as our customers, and we believe that we have served them well, and I know that these two will, in fact, continue on along with Chief Don, that we will succeed, we will continue to succeed. And with that, like Chuck Knoll said, it's time for me to go on with my life's work. I have family, like I said, you know, family's a big thing to me, and my extended family, the Fire Department, and that's what I'll miss the most, is the people. So, once again, thank you, and good night.
Peters Township Firefighters, attention. Chief McLaughlin and Coyle, front and center. Chief, raise your right hand and state your name.
Like one McLaughlin Jr. I do hereby solemnly and sincerely swear to assume the responsibilities of the position that I have been assigned to by the laws of this company. To my successor, I will turn over all properties at the end of my official term. To these duties that are entrusted to me, I will perform to the best of my ability, so help me God.
I do. Chief.
I will be brief when I say this, but it is truly an amazing honor to be the Fire Chief of Peters Township. In some municipalities, it's a title of someone who gets voted in every year by the fire company, and this position can change quite frequently. In Peters Township, it's been 37 years since our last chief took office, and in that 37 years, the title of Fire Chief has grown to mean so much more than just the person in charge of the Fire Department. Chief Coyle has helped make this position into an extremely prestigious figure within our great municipality. The men and women sitting in front of me and the many others that served in this community as firefighters are also reasons why this position is held so highly. Above the doors entering the fire station, used to hang a sign that said, "Through these doors walk the best damn firefighters to do this job." That was true then, and though the sign isn't there anymore, that statement has never been truer today. Though we have come so far as a Fire Department, as we grow, some change is inevitable. This will continue in the form of progression. We live and serve in a great, growing community, one that the Fire Department will grow with. Even as we progress, there will be equipment and ideas that Chief Coyle has implemented that will be around for decades and decades to come. Fortunately-
(laughing)
-that won't be one of them. I would like to introduce everybody to my wife, Brittany, my children, Salo and Brighton. None of this would be remotely possible without you. I love you with every bit of my heart, and thank you so much for everything. Thankfully, I get to be Chief here at work, because everybody knows she's the Chief at home. To my parents and my brother, thank you for all the love and support you've given me my entire life. The fire service is something that they have supported the entire time, not only for me but for my father as well. Chief Coyle, thank you for believing in me to continue your legacy as Fire Chief. It's been amazing working with you, and I have so many things to thank you for. To all the men and women that I served with, thank you. You have helped me make this extremely hard decision very, very easy. I will continue to work hard with you every single day. To the members of council, Mr. Lauer, the residents of Peters Township, I will work hard for you every single day. Thank you for giving me this incredible opportunity, and I won't let you down. Before I even started my first day as Fire Chief, we got to have input on the person that would replace me as the Deputy Fire Chief. Dave Caputo has worked so hard for this position well before it was ever made available. He has a great family and a great sense of community. Dave Caputo, Chief Gooney, please step forward.
Peters Township Firefighters, attention. Chief Caputo, raise your right hand and state your name.
I do hereby solemnly and sincerely swear to assume the responsibilities of the position to which I have been appointed according to the laws of this company. I will return all properties to this company upon the completion of my term. To the responsibilities entrusted to me, I promise to perform them to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Coyle, Chief McLaughlin, Chief Caputo. Peters Township Firefighters, attention. Ready and salute. Ready, two. Thank you, residents and council.
Are you going to give him the plaque?
Okay, we'll take a brief recess while the firemen take their time. Take all the time you want, guys. Chief, move on with the regular portion of the meeting, so to speak. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on May 28th, 2019. Motion to the second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Six, zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is special reports, of which there are none. Next is audience comments. This is the portion of the meeting where any member of the audience can speak up to five minutes on a non-agenda item. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item, please come forward.
Hi, Julie Cantrell, 446 East McMurray Road. I know we're going to talk about the, like, the correspondence that I sent later, but I also wanted to talk about something that was brought up the last meeting about a statement maybe that we could put on the Peters Township website or in our future publications, that just a nondiscrimination statement, and I found a couple. One, I kind of modified from Shenango Township in Lawrence County, and basically, if we would rework it, it would say Peters Township is committed to providing an environment that's free from discrimination and employment and opportunity because of race, color, religion, creed, national origin, ancestry, marital status, disability, veteran or draft status, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, and/or age. So, I would like Peters Township to adopt and publicize that statement for its website, future publications like the calendar, anything else that's put out. It's not an ordinance, it's not anything that you would have to enforce, just it's a statement saying that as a township, we don't discriminate. The one from Shenango Township did not include gender identity, but I would like ours to include gender identity. Theirs did include sexual orientation, so, and if we were able to do that, then I could see putting, like, placing a stall or a hold on the nondiscrimination ordinance until we, like, were able to get more information and maybe research that a little bit more, but at least if we started with this, then we could see what happens. We know we have some Supreme Court cases coming up. We know we hopefully have a law for Pennsylvania that will take care of all of this. Even with that in place, I think this statement would be a good thing for our township to have. Now, so I have a copy of the entire thing. So, now Shenango Township actually has an ordinance, so I only looked at the top part as what we would use, and then the other one that I, like, honestly, was just kind of quickly trying to find a few, was from a city of Portland. But, you know, just a couple of examples that you could have to look at. Any questions with that?
Thank you.
Hi, Carol Lee Cattalar, 103 Bethany Drive. I've spoken here previously about a suggestion for a task force to look into nondiscrimination ordinance. I just want to say that I support what Julie is suggesting. If we could add some wording on to the website, any other material that comes out of the township, I think that would be a real positive and a real step in the right direction, and to show that we are a welcoming community, and I think that's really important for people of all ages, all types of people, to know that they are welcome here, whether they live here, whether they shop here. I just think that would be a step in the right direction, and I agree with Julie. I think if council is willing to do that, I think we can put the, my suggestion for a task force on hold, and let's see what happens with the Supreme Court decisions that are going to be coming down. Thank you.
Annie Shaner, 123 Robin Hood Lane, McMurray, PA. All right. I don't know why I did this to myself, but now I'm getting calls about pickleball.
You want the pickleball magazine?
No. No. People want to know, is the pool taking precedent over the pickleball courts? So, I ask that question.
Yes.
It is.
In my mind.
In your mind?
But, it's good I can answer that question, though. The fact of the matter is, we have facilities that play pickleball on our current tennis courts. They were realigned to be able to accommodate outdoor play, and then in addition to that, we currently provide for indoor play at the recreation center, so there is already facilities for pickleball.
Okay, because they're reminding me that this council chamber was jam-packed, and it was enthusiastic for the pickleball courts. I was here, I saw it. It's the first time I've ever heard of pickleball. I don't know what pickleball is. So, once again, I'm neutral on this, okay? So-
Actually, the pick's not interrupting, ma'am. Pickleball courts actually are part of the comprehensive plan for the park.
I know, I know. They're asking, they want to know when they're going to be built in the new park, okay? I have no answer, so that's why I'm here. So, you know, I've been thinking about this. I know how many signatures we need, because now I have people by this referendum on my back. Look, I don't want to do a referendum, okay? I know how much work that involves. I know how many signatures we need to do that. It would be cutting it close. So, I really do believe that, you know, as our elected officials, people tell me all the time, we have to trust in you, that you're here to do your job and to do it well and to do it good, okay? So, we have to trust that you will all have emerging of the minds and do what you think the public really wants, okay? From my viewpoint, talking to all these people, it looks like money's the issue, and I'm talking mostly to Republicans, okay? Look, I'm a Democrat, I admit it, I'm a Democrat. They're telling me, how come they want to spend so much money? So, I think the struggle here is, we got a school that's going to cost us, how much?
I don't know, I don't do the school project.
About ninety, what?
Hundred and ten million.
Oh, I hear, I thought ninety-two. Okay, so there you go, a hundred and ten?
I think so.
Something like that? Yeah, people are saying, we're spending that much on the school, now they're hitting us with this pool thing, you know? So, there's got to be some kind of happy medium here, okay? So, I was thinking, you know, for a community to thrive, I agree, you do need to, you know, develop it, you need to have things that attract people. If you look at the demographics, though, you know, they don't support so much that, all right? Because you got about 38% of people who are 50 and older. That population's going to get bigger. Your younger population is not going to grow. So, if you look at the demographics, you have to have that as part of your guiding light, okay, in your decision-making, and what will please the public the most. So, it's hard for me to do this, okay? It's really hard for me to do this, but I'm going to trust you guys to help me out here and do the right thing, okay? And come to some kind of consensus, whether it be to do the pool, put it on hold, don't do the pool, or do pickleball, don't do pickleball, do something, but you got to do something, okay? Do we have an answer about the market analysis thing?
We negotiated a contract, in fact, later on, and when we approved payroll and bills, I need to talk to council.
Okay. And when they do that, when will that get done? Do you know?
It will be somewhere between four and six weeks after we sign the contract.
Four to six weeks after you sign the contract.
So, we're hoping mid-July, late of, late July.
Okay. All right, mid-July. All right. So, do you all feel that's going to tell you something?
Well, we hope so.
Okay. All right. So, I'm going to hold on to that, okay? I'm going to hold on to that and see what we come up with, okay? All right.
Your arm coming along?
Huh?
Oh, your wrist coming along?
My wrist is, it doesn't hurt. I have no pain, no pain. That's a good sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaner. Can that be picked up?
Maybe.
I'd imagine so.
Did, if you did get a weight, it sounds like it's backwards. You know what, let's take the plaque. Looks to be.
Don't drop it.
Good evening, council. Ron Books, 855 Bebaut Road. Pardon the graphics, it's the best I could do for the time being. Basically, I'm here to talk about the pool as well. When we had the meeting at the middle school regarding the pool, there was one thing that stuck in my mind that I felt should be brought up, and it wasn't, and that had to deal with alternatives. What are the alternatives to building this pool? Well, I began thinking, and I said, maybe the answer's right in front of me. Now, the reason I bring that up is, if we look at that little drawing that I provided, you'll see that there's Pool A and Pool B. Well, Pool A is the pool that will be built in the high school, the new high school. Pool B represents the pool that the township wants to build. They are literally across the street from one another. So, my question is, why are we building two pools? The pool that the township would like to build would be used during the months of June, July, and August. Coincidentally, the pool that will be built at the high school probably won't get much use during the months of June, July, and August, when the students are on summer break. So, why couldn't the residents of Peters Township, since we are paying for both pools, if that's the case, simply use the pool at the high school? I think it would make a lot of sense. The other thing that would happen is we wouldn't have to put in as large a parking lot at the township pool, because a high school parking lot would probably be more than enough to handle the traffic to and from the pool. As I see it, a thousand feet separate the two pools. The distance between the two pools is a thousand feet versus the cost to the community. The pool, I believe, is around $11 million. If I divide the thousand-feet distance into the $11 million, I come up with $11,000 a foot that's going to have to come out of my back pocket to buy that second pool. My question is, is it necessary? Have we really looked at alternatives? No, I don't think we have. I haven't seen a good case for alternatives yet. The other thing is, if we need to provide pool facilities to people in the township, I would suggest that our Director of Parks and Recreation travel over to Upper St. Clair and see if she could not strike a deal with Upper St. Clair for Peters Township residents to get a discounted rate. I mean, I'm willing to loan her my Trump book on bargaining and contract development, if that's necessary, but I think there are other alternatives than spending $11 million on a pool that may not, in the end, prove viable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lauer. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? Seeing no one, we will move on to unfinished business. Under unfinished business, we have approval for recording purposes of the Donaldson's Crossroads Final Plan of Lots Number Three, as shown on drawings prepared by the latest engineering dated March 14th, 2019. As my firm has been retained by the owner of the shopping center, I'm going to recuse myself from this. Vice Chairman Ball will handle this discussion.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Lauer, would you like to review quickly where we are with it?
Sure. As council's aware, this item has previously been to council, and it's been tabled. It has been reviewed by the Planning Commission as well as the Planning Department. It is our belief that the applicant has met all the requirements that are associated with subdividing this property, and it's therefore the recommendation of the Planning Department as well as my own that this subdivision be approved.
Members of council, have any comment? I think that we've discussed this on several different occasions, and I think that there are a number of people that aren't very happy with exactly how it occurred, but as Mr. Lauer pointed out, the subdivision request does meet all the obligations of the ordinance, and we really have no legal grounds upon which to reject it. Do you accept the motion?
So does-
Is there a second?
Seven.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve.
I request a voice ballot by individual.
Roll call.
Roll call.
What did he say? He wants a roll call.
Mrs. Merrill?
Reluctant, aye.
Mr. Steigel?
Aye.
Mr. Arcuri?
Nay.
Aye, you got a vote, aye. Mr. Lewis?
What do we need for-
You need three votes to approve the motion.
And there are three affirmatives?
There are three affirmatives.
Declared. Nay.
We have a three to two with one abstention.
Okay. Thank you. Does it? Thank you, Mr. Ball. Moving on to new business. First item is acceptance of the resignation of Margaret Samms from the Environmental Board.
I'm moved to be accepted, resignation with regrets.
Second.
Have a motion to the second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Six, zero, Mr. Lauer.
Mr. Chairman, it's not necessarily on the agenda, but we have already interviewed candidates for EQB and found some very satisfactory ones. I'd like to make a motion, appoint a lady to replace Mrs., to fulfill Ms. Samms' term on the EQB.
Have a motion to the second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Six, zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is approval for recording purposes of the Madera Plan of Lots, as shown on drawings prepared by the Red Swing Group dated May 31st, 2019, prepared for Benadere Woods Jr.
And although this involves a number of existing lots, it's actually a simple subdivision. There are currently six lots on this piece of property, and what's being proposed is that they be combined together and create two large lots. This has been reviewed by the Planning Commission and the Planning Department staff. They have recommended approval, and it's my recommendation the council will approve it as well.
You have a favor.
A motion to the second, any further discussion?
Just a clarifying question. You made a remark about the address. Was there something we need to clarify?
Yes, it's the one, it's the one exception I take to the recommendation that came out of the Planning Commission. It proposes that there be- It proposes that there be a second address for this larger, the larger parcel on Just About Road, and when Ed and I looked at that closer, we do not believe there's sufficient frontage on, on Just About Road to accommodate an address. So it's going to be my recommendation that, that there only be an address on Thomas Road.
Where does it even hit, just about?
At, at the bottom.
Very near.
Really? I don't know if there's two lots there.
Just the very edge of Justin, right where it swings off.
The western part.
Yeah.
Right here.
I don't see them.
Not there, but the other.
Where?
Towne Park.
It's, it's, it's here.
Okay.
Yeah. Before we vote, one question. Is there anything we can do about the parking lot he's created off of Thomas Road there? When you drive by, and he's got, at any point in time, he's got like five or six trailers parked there. I mean, it essentially looks like a commercial parking lot that he's put in there. He's put a gate in, puts some gravel down, and he's, seriously, it looks like he has a commercial parking lot there on that parcel.
I'll talk to him, but if those vehicles are licensed, I don't know that there's anything we can do about that.
Wouldn't that be under ordinance or?
Only if they're, if they're being used for a commercial purpose, that, that would be a problem.
If they're his private vehicles parked there, then...
I would suspect that they are commercial.
Certainly what they look like, yes.
Let us check that.
Go check it out.
I was surprised to note the observation of it there the other day.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is authorization of the appropriate township officials to execute a storm sewer maintenance agreement with the Environmentally Sound Enterprises LLC, as well as sign and submit a Pendott Highway Occupancy Permit Application.
So the developers of the Westbury plan intend to tie in a storm sewer coming out of the stormwater retention pond, and it will come across and connect into the storm sewer system owned by Pendott. Anytime that occurs, a highway occupancy permit is needed. While eventually this pipe will become a publicly owned pipe, in the interim, it will be privately owned. And so what we need is two things. One, we need an agreement with the developer that they're going to accept responsibility for this pipe until such time as it's been dedicated to the township and accepted. And the second thing is that, to be able to do this, they need to file with, we need to file with Pendott a highway occupancy permit. Private developers cannot be applicants on highway occupancy permits. Only the township can be for this purpose. And so therefore, we need authorization of the appropriate official to sign that highway occupancy permit.
I'll make a motion that we recommend that we authorize the appropriate township official to execute the storm water, it's yours, with the storm sewer maintenance agreement with Environmentally Sound Enterprises, and that the appropriate individual will be authorized to sign and submit the Pendott Highway Occupancy Permit for that application.
Mr. Rader?
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Are we getting any kind of bond or surety from them to, to cover the interim?
Well, I don't think, the answer is no, but I, but that is not customary with these agreements. The other thing that you don't need to worry about is, they need us to accept these public improvements, and so therefore, there's a tremendous amount of leverage the township has with regard to that development.
Thank you.
Okay, have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is approval of change order number one to a contracted grant construction for refurbishing the library restrooms.
So in the process of refurbishing the library restrooms there, the drains, the four drains needed to be elevated. Normally, this wouldn't be a big deal, but the four drains that had been placed in there previously were actually cemented into place, and so therefore, they had to be chipped out and new drains installed. The cost of this change order is $660.
Do we approve the change order in a second?
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is award of a bid for the 2019 pavement rejuvenator project.
As council is aware, in the 2019 budget, there's appropriation of $1,525,000 for the, for the purposes of the 2019 road improvement program. In April, when the bids were open, we also redirected $95,000 budgeted for the parking lot resurfacing to the road improvement program, which meant that there was $1,620,000 available. So we've already awarded a contract for the road paving, that in excess of $1,480,000. And then in addition to that, we issued a contract for $24,000 to Russell Standard for Crack Ceiling, which means that there's $113,595 left that is, has been appropriated and not committed. The cost of this contract is $124,640. Now, one of the things that's happened in the meantime is we've gotten our liquid fuels check in, and it is actually in excess of $18,953 above that, which was budgeted. So what I'm suggesting is that we award the contract for the rejuvenator program, the pavement technologies, and that later, when we do a budget amendment, we will include appropriating those additional funds that we received for liquid fuels. As in the past, there is only one contractor for the rejuvenator product. The price this year is about 3.4% higher than last year. If you want to discuss the value of that, I think Mark's probably in a better position to do that, but Mark and I both believe that we ought to be awarding that bid.
Why are we going to get one? Is this the only company that does this?
It's the only company that uses the product that we specify, Reclamite.
Are there, are there other outlets that serve the Sealer Program?
Not well. We've looked at some other ones. The thing about the Reclamite is you can drive on it almost instantaneously. Some of the sealers, like we, I don't know if you saw the Venetia parking lot that we did a couple of years ago, it's more of a black sealer. I mean, it, it came out okay, but you can't drive on it for 24 hours. So there's a logistical component of the Reclamite too that we need to consider.
Mr. Somalis, I was surprised at some of the streets that we're doing, because they're in newer plans. They're in Westbury Pines, they're in, off of Villa Drive here off of Just About. I, I was surprised just that there are newer streets. Can you explain that?
Well, yeah, what we do with the rejuvenator program is, is the whole purpose of it is it makes the asphalt, in a sense, more pliable. The oils that it loses through oxidation and thermal stresses and stuff, it puts those back into the pavement, it rejuvenates the pavement. So you want to do it early on in the pavement lifecycle to extend the pavement lifecycle, to heal those microcracks that form before they turn into bigger cracks. So we do it on a one-year and a three-year cycle. So in other words, if we paved a road last year, or a developer put the final wearing course on a road last year, we'll, we'll hit it with the rejuvenate, the Reclamite this year, and then in year three again.
Is that a standard practice in all developments?
Not in all developments. It usually, it usually depends on the amount of square yardage we have in a particular year. Like some years, if we have the water company come in, and they did a ton of roads, we won't give the water companies roads that they pave. If we have a ton of roads accepted by develop, or, or in new developments, sometimes we won't put those in, depending on the square yardages that we have. The thought process has always been, we want to rejuvenate the roads that we pave ourselves first, and then we'll worry about water company and developing roads and stuff after. It's usually just a budgetary thing that we...
Well, I can appreciate the strategy, but I'm just trying to understand, if that's the case, why other, with the sequence in other plans is. Because it seems to me that we haven't done this in some of the other plans that have been built in prior to these. So that was my question.
It's kind of bittersweet with the plans. It depends on how much money we're spending for resurfacing in a given year, how much is available.
Okay, so the rest of that question is, at what point does the rejuvenation of the asphalt, is it not worth it? Like if the plan's been in place for what length of time, you just wait until you have to repave it, or?
Yes, exactly. I mean, it's not the end of the world if a street doesn't get rejuvenated, but it's a practice that we support and that we want to keep doing.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand the strategy, because like I said, there were, there are newer streets, so. Thank you.
Will we award the rejuvenator plan with the consideration of the budget adjustment?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is request by Youngwood Paving for permission to perform night work along Center Church Road near the intersection of East McMurray Road to construct storm sewer crossings as part of the 2019 road improvement project.
So what is anticipated in the 2019 road improvement program is the replacement of two crossings on, on Center Church Road near the East McMurray intersection. We are all of the opinion that it would make more sense, given the volume of traffic on Center Church Road, to be able to accomplish that work in, you know, overnight, as opposed to doing it during the day. What's your estimate, Mark, on how long that?
One, one to two nights.
So moved.
Question I have is, the road will be closed. The announcement starts, I believe, Monday, due to the work up with the tie-in to the school.
You mean on the other side of Center Church?
That's on the other side?
Yes. That's up by Center Presbyterian Church.
Well, I realize that. I thought that's where this crossing was going to be.
No, this is on the south side of East McMurray. Spruce is about halfway up the page. You can't see it real well, but...
Yeah, and I looked at it on my phone, so I couldn't even see it that well.
Well, I agree with Mr. Lewis. I think that, per se, too, would that cause problems for the residents getting in and out of there?
Should.
When you say night work, are you referring to specific hours? There's some, there's a lot of residences on, on that side.
Yeah, it's, it is a residential area.
So are there any limitations? I mean, they can do this till midnight, two in the morning?
No, I mean, I think the, the thought process is, you know, maybe from like nine to six before, you know, after rush hour in the evening, and then before rush hour in the morning.
It's no different than anything else with approval.
Right.
It's my neighborhood, so I'm the one that's sticking my neck out by making those approvals.
It's true.
So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Five one, Mr. Lauer. Next item is request by Herbert Rowland and Grubich on behalf of Peters Township Sanitary Authority to perform night work along West McMurray Road near the intersection with Oakwood Road to construct sanitary sewer crossings as part of the Donaldson's Crossroads Interceptor Improvement Project.
So you have the same situation on West McMurray Road. They are going to have to cross it with a new sewer line. Their preference is to do that at night, rather than to tie the traffic up on West McMurray Road during the day. Again, I don't see an alternative to, to doing that work at any other time.
How long is this going to take?
I would assume that there would be at least a few days.
Yeah, I, I, the contractor for the authority thinks two to three days.
I can tell you that if we don't do it at night, the traffic, you know...
Well, I, I know that. Well, there's not as many residences down there.
The other people in Evergreen, that's going to be the one problem.
That's my initial response. Yeah, I, I move we approve that.
I'll second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is request from the Venetia Heritage Society for a donation.
In the past, the council has authorized a donation of $1,000 for the Venetia Heritage Society. The basis upon which we've done that is the Venetia Heritage Society building houses the Dare Model Road, Model Railroad Program, which is a township program. In addition to that, there's a senior citizen facility there that provides lunches for people in that area. So like I say, in the past, council has authorized the donation of $1,000.
I'll make a motion that we authorize $1,000 donation to the Venetia Heritage Society.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is payroll and bills.
Chairman, I reviewed the payroll and bills. I find them in order and move that they be paid. Mr. Lauer has no comment?
I have one comment. I just want you to be aware that the, the contract with Campos, for the purpose of doing the market study, their normal business practice is to require 50% payment upfront. I expressed to them that that's not our normal practice. What they have done is reduced that to a third. In the extra bills tonight, there is a, a check for $11,200 that Campos...
I'll second Mr. Ball's motion. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I just had a question. There was a name on there for escrow, Zach Willens, $104,000. Is that development?
That's the pooch pit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
They bonded their improvements before, that were not complete before occupancy, and they finished them, and we returned their...
The Venetian did some, thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Moving on to correspondence. First thing we have is an email from Julie Cantrell to Paul, Paul Lauer, dated June 3, 2019, requesting the council place on the agenda an amendment to section 44-15 of the Peters Township Code of Ordinances entitled "Policy Against Discrimination."
So the township, in two different places, has expressed the position with regard to discrimination. The first appears in the Township Code of Ordinances and the Administrative Code, and the Administrative Code for the township goes back to 1976. So this is the language that, that currently appears in the Township Code. In addition to that, inside the employee handbook, there is a statement that's actually a bit more expansive than the, than the language that was in the Code of Ordinances. So where the Code of Ordinance does refer to political opinions and affiliations, what's in the handbook does not, but the handbook does include disability, and the reason why it's there and not in the Code of Ordinances, that the Americans with Disabilities Act only dates back to 1990 and was not in place when the Code of Ordinance was adopted. Marital status, veteran status, because of the veteran status bills in the state of Pennsylvania. And then when this was, was written, because protected classes can be somewhat dynamic, it also has this catch-all that says, any other characteristics protected by applicable federal and state law. So in my interpretation of that, given the guidance that the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission has given us right now, that does include gender and, and...
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation, excuse me. But what is being asked is that, that this language be adopted, which is really mimics the language that's in the Township Code of Ordinance right now, and adds gender identity and sexual orientation. So that's, that's what's in front of me tonight.
My opinion is that we need to be consistent in our language. I've talked to you on numerous occasions about that, with policy format and policy language. And if we are going to make some adjustments, then this particular proposed language does not include disability, which it should. And the other should mimic. So whatever we decide to do, I would like them to be consistent, and probably using the most current terminology.
I think that this is, this is before various courts, including the Supreme Court. So I don't think that the definition of gender identity and sexual orientation is exactly a done deal yet in terms of protected classes. Further, some people agree and don't agree that they're even classes. So I'm absolutely opposed to that.
So the question before us tonight is whether, not whether or not we want to change the policy, but whether or not we want to put it on an agenda for another meeting.
You cannot, but because what, to make these changes, the changes to the Code of Ordinance would take an ordinance to, to enact, and the language that's in the handbook is adopted by resolution, so a resolution would have to be drafted. The one thing that I, I would agree with Mrs. Merrill on is that... The one thing that I, I would agree with Mrs. Merrill on is that the language in, in both places should mirror each other. And I do think the language that is in the handbook that refers to any other characteristics protected by applicable federal and state law is something that ought to be included because again, from time to time, protected classes change.
Do we have a plan for when we were going to actually look at the handbook again? I was trying to look back and see when we get.
August of 2017.
Yeah, I guess it's only been a couple of years ago, so we weren't planning a comprehensive review of the handbook right now.
I think that municipalities are not in a position to try and define protected classes as a federal and state function. It's before the Supreme Court, so they will, whatever they decide to do, we're going to have to do. So I move that we table this item until the Supreme Court makes a better decision on this.
I'll second that. Although I would say that, I, I would agree with Mrs. Merrill. If we're bound to change it, we should just change it so that it mirrors the employee handbook.
I agree that we should, they should be consistent.
But at this point in time, I don't see spending the time after a solicitor over this.
I can appreciate what you're saying. Do you anticipate though, when this gets through the courts, they might give us additional definitions or, or term.
I think if they determine that, that those acts encompass transgender, sexual orientation and all that, then that language would be, or any other characteristic protected by applicable federal and state law would be sufficient. I think if they didn't, then that might be more appropriate time to, to look at this. But I don't think we should spend any more time after all pending decisions in those cases. Unless you guys feel differently, I, I don't.
And those cases are for what, the November list or, you know?
I don't know. I think there's like more than one. Like when we were here last night, I thought there was one, but there's actually like several. So I don't know when they're going to pop up on the doc. They won't start their term until October, so I'm thinking probably right now they'll be briefed.
So if they hear them in October, they'll probably, probably look at these.
Their term would end in.
June.
May or June.
June.
Something like that, so I don't think they're going to wait till the very end. But I'm watching the courts.
All right, well, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Nay.
Five one, Mr. Lauer. Anything else we need to discuss under correspondence?
Um, no.
Okay, moving on to meeting minutes. Is there any member of council wishes to discuss any of the various committee meeting minutes? Okay, hearing no one, we'll move on to miscellaneous. First item is zoning hearing board report.
In your document is a report from Seth Coon, the Assistant Planning Director, pointing out that there are two zoning cases coming up. The only one of note, I think, for us is there's a variance request by Mr. Robinson to allow for a drive-through. This is actually on the property that we're leasing to him. I'll be honest with you, I, I don't think Ed or I realized at the time when the, when the lease was signed that, that a drive-through was not a permitted use there. So he's going to, if he's going to pursue that, he's going to have to get a variance, so.
And are we going to take a position on that?
That's up to you and that's the only reason I bring it up to you.
I think this is on the hearing board issue. I'm going to just let that go.
Okay, next item is.
Well, wait a minute. I, why are we all just passing over this idea of a pool cover?
On the what? Well, because I don't think that, you know, if council has a position on that, that's fine, but I can tell you from our standpoint, a pool cover is not adequate safety for a pool and I think it's our position that.
The fence is obligation of the.
Is that what, is that what we require now was the fence?
Yes.
Is this, is this like a public? That was a little repeated.
Just a flat cover?
Just a flat cover.
Okay, I thought it was starting to use it. It's got to be more dangerous.
Yeah, I just don't think it's adequate safety.
Well, I would prefer that we reflect the fact that we're adamant that the.
Fence be an.
Got it.
We can do that.
Rather than just pass over.
Well, I think we should take the position that we're opposed to.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's not a barrier, a substantial barrier, a fence or a wall.
As a matter of fact, it could be more dangerous if someone.
Oh, yeah.
They can get back there.
That's what I would be afraid of.
Thanks for bringing that up, Mr. Paul.
Okay, moving on, request for a workshop on Monday, July 1st, 2019.
We, we would like to be able to get together with council on July 1st for a couple of different reasons. One, by then we will have in the proposals from the design professionals for Rolling Hills Park. And we wanted to give council an opportunity to sit down with both firms, if you would prefer, and to be able to hear directly from them prior to council making the decision on that following Monday. We also would like to be able to have a discussion with you about this question of taking over privately owned stormwater management facilities. And then we have been working on some changes to the property maintenance ordinance in terms of the way we want to go about enforcing that and we want to bring you up to date on what, what it is we intend to bring to council.
That's fine.
It's fine for me, too.
Okay.
Is there anyone here that that doesn't work for?
No, that's fine.
Okay, is there anything that any member of council wants to see on the next agenda? Does anyone have anything for the good of the order?
I would don't think that council would like to congratulate all the 2019 grads from Peters Township High School. They were released last Friday. It was a lovely ceremony, wonderful day for them. So congratulations to everyone who graduated and their parents who are now seeing them on their next leg in their life journey.
Looking forward to them returning in four years, I'm sure.
Paul. They're still over there.
Two things. One, I just want to let you know I will be on vacation starting tomorrow. I'll be back a week from tomorrow on Tuesday. The other thing is the, the fire department is actually having a small reception over the library. It's still going on. You've been invited to attend if you wish.
Meeting adjourned.